Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified School District this May 14th, 2024 at 6:02 PM. We called the meeting to order, let the attendance show that we are all in attendance. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
A motion by trustee Corio, I think I heard trustee Sellers next. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining. Motion carries seven zero. We now invite any comments from the public on any of our closed session items.
No calls at this moment.
Then with that, we will go ahead and close to, we will head to closed session. We will be back at 7:00 PM to reconvene and open session. Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. This is May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven oh two P M. As I report final actions from closed session, on item E two, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Kerfan. The motion passed six zero with trustee Solis absent. On on item E three, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. On items E six, RMA oh oh two two one three, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Malin. The item passed five one one with trustee Solis opposing and trustee Kerfan abstaining, which was a denial of the claim. We move on to the pledge of allegiance, and I will ask Vice President Correa to lead us.
Please stand. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, we invite Senor Lazo to come and share about our community engagement information.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Central Unified. This is May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven oh two P M. As I report final actions from closed session, on item E two, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Kerfan. The motion passed six zero with trustee Solis absent. On on item E three, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. On items E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Item passed seven zero. And on item E six...
Please state to deny.
Oh, sorry. And and this was a denial of the claim? And on item E six, RMA oh oh two 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 seven, we had a motion by trustee Correa, a
S S A, S A E proficiency program above the chapter level. All see, seven of these students placed in the top of their respective contests at the West Fresno Madera section and continued on to represent themselves and our district at the San Joaquin region contest and even on to the state level. So I'm going to say your names, students. If you come up as I call your name, I'll I'll say who you are and then I'll introduce the teachers as well. Addison Martinez is first. She was competing in the extemporaneous public speaking. She took third. Go ahead. You can come up here and shake the hands. Public speaking, third at the sectional, qualified for regional, our regional competition. Kayden Plan is next. She competed in prepared public speaking. She was second at the sectional and qualified for the regional. Stephen Vang is prepared, he competed in the prepared public speaking. He was third at the sectional and qualified for the regional. Macy Richardson, she competed in the prepared public speaking. She was fourth at the sectional, qualified for the regional competition, but Macy also took third in the Cal, in California for the agricultural processing placement proficiency, recognizing her efforts with her S A E. Logan Wood, he was our job interview contest, first at the sectional, first at the regional, and third high individual in the state competition. Logan also took first place in the state ag mechanics, repair, and maintenance placement proficiency for his excellent work in his family's business. Carly Pittman, she competed in the job interview contest. She was sec, second at the sectional, fourth at the regional, and fourth at the individual state competition. Carly was also second in the state swine production placement proficiency, acknowledging her efforts as a swine herd manager on the school farm. And then finally, Gracie Malin, she was competing in the job interview contest. She was third at the sectional, second at the regional, and qualified for the state competition. These students' successes are due to the hard work and the dedication to improving as leaders and as confident public speakers and practitioners who can represent our district and our agriculture program in a in a very positive way. So we appreciate what they've done. But I also want to say, we have Chris Williams here, June Betancourt, Yasenia Ramirez, and Jessica Fahy. Sorry, I'm, sorry about that. All of them, they're awesome. And like, like everyone said, if you, if you can make it to the ag spring banquet that's on Thursday, it'll be an amazing event. Thank you tonight.
Thank you to all of our FFA students and all of their families for joining us. We move on to our employee recognition. Assistant Superintendent Collegian.
Thank you, President Sing, Board of Trustees. I'd like to acknowledge two of our, our very own employees for recognition this evening. The first one is Mr. Paul Burrell, who is not here with us this evening, but I do want to share that he was the recent recipient of the William F. Noli Award. A little bit about this award. Annually, a minimum of five business partners are honored by F C S S for outstanding service and dedication to ROP and career technical education. Mr. Burrell was one of the recipients this year and was honored at the Fresno ROP Spring Advisory Night on April twenty-fourth at Kerman High School. Congratulations, Mr. Burrell. Also, we have one of our teachers here this evening, Ms. Alyssa Feit, FCC L A Advisor Mentor Award. The Advisor Mentor Award recognizes recognizes advisors who have achieved master advisor status and have devoted two years to new advisor assistants, assumed adult leadership roles in FCC L A, conducted many advisor workshops, attended training workshops, and utilized national and state resources. Ms. Feit has been recognized for outstanding contributions in these areas and exemplify the qualities of an exceptional mentor and leader within the organization. Congratulations, Ms. Feit. Come on up.
Next, we move on to our employee association highlights. Can I invite Laura Bolton, our C U T A president?
All right. Thank you so much for having me. I have a pretty lengthy list of, of really wonderful things that were shared with me from our site reps. They are really proud of the hard work that has been going in all year long and really seeing the fruits of their labor at this time of year. So last week was Educator Educator Appreciation Week. Teachers, nurses, S L P psychologists, and counselors were showered with praise and treats. They deserve every ounce of love and appreciation that was sent their way. Preschool S D C will be having a preschool graduation for their S D C students, graduation because these are little ones, for our S D C students transitioning to TK or kindergarten on June seventh. On May second, our preschool also participated in Special Olympics with adapted P E students from Justin Garza, and they came out and helped, and it was a fun and eventful day. So it's really nice to see those collaborations between our little ones and our big ones. Tilly competed in their first Lego Robotics competition and got first place in the performance task of the competition. Pathway was interviewed by Channel Thirty and a spot was put on the air May seventh about their model school winning achievement. At Biola, the P B I S team is working hard together. They are working on being transparent and addressing issues at the site and they are saying that is going well. At Roosevelt, and all of our sites for that matter, testing is wrapping up and it has been reported that it has gone pretty well. At Roosevelt, their P B I S student council and admin worked hard to put together a spirit week and a field day to kick off testing beforehand. The kids had a great time and were excited to participate in field day activities. The whole staff came together to help, including intervention and support staff, and it was a whole team effort. The kids had tons of fun. They also had raffle prizes to hand out to the kids who were going above and beyond during their testing. I've been on a lot of sites lately and I know these drawings are happening at other schools. These are just the ones that have reported to me, but I know that that was happening at other school sites because I was present while it happened. Our district counselors put on Mental Health Awareness Week across the district, something that is very needed. They put a lot of time and effort into the activities that they rolled out at the campuses. Rio Vista had several rooms recently received new carpet and they're really, really thankful for that. Madison reports that Wild About Reading, that incentive that we used to have from the Grizzlies, it's back and it's going really well. The Scholastic Book Fair funds P B I S incentives, and so that was a big success on their campus. And they are eagerly awaiting a new vice principal for the next school year. And they had a staff potluck on the Friday after they came back from spring break and it was a really nice coming together of the staff. Central Elementary had over three hundred students participate in the Making the Grade Field Trip to the Grizzlies, so the Wild About Reading baseball game. That's first through sixth grade students. Mrs. Hang's second grade class won top selection in the exemplary class book K through five category at the Young Authors Fair for their book Second Grade Color Monsters. And Mrs. Roach's fifth grade class was also recognized by the Fresno County Office of Education for their Young Authors Fair book. River Bluff had a Sounds of Success choir performance on April twenty-fifth. I know they weren't the only school involved, but that they reported it to me. They said it was wonderful. The kids did an amazing job at all levels and the hard work of the choir and music teachers was much appreciated. They're really grateful to have such talented people working with our students and the time and effort they put into it was obvious. They also hosted a Gate Family Night. They had hands-on activities after the speaker and it fit with their theme for the year, Famous Failures, Learning from Failure, Some Failures Turn Into Successes, et cetera. They had a very special speaker come out, Dr. Rhonda Hamm. She happens to be the daughter of one of our retired nurses, Rachel Hamm. She's an entomologist and she spoke to them about overcoming her fear of insects and turning it into fascination and a career. L cap, their band had a shared performance on April nineteenth with Central Valley Winds. That's an adult music wind group and it was a great experience for the students to see their own teacher perform and to play along with them. And one of our, our teachers from Tilly, Andrea Hernandez, also performs with Central Valley Winds and she was really impressed with the level of L cap's band. H K had a college and career day with about fifteen booths so that students could visit and check out different kinds of careers. They had their carnival return for the first time since COVID and they earned a Bonner Character Award. Glacier and Liddell both reported their track wins. So Glacier had Valley Champions in track, the men's thirteen fourteen two hundred meter hurdles. Sports is not my thing, so apologies if I say these things wrong. And that was Edward Brown from Glacier Point. The women's fifteen one hundred meters, that one was won by Sky Lawrence. And then they had their, their spring musical begin. They're performing Into the Woods Junior. Liddell, their track performance, they had second place in the valley for a four-by-four relay. Callan Pepper, Liam Bowser, Noah Delgado, and Carter Taylor were on that second place in the valley relay team. And they also had a first place in the valley high jump. Carter Taylor won first place in the, in the entire valley. Science Olympiad also happened recently over at Sunnyside High School and we had a bunch of our schools participate. McKinley, Harvest, Roosevelt, Liddell, Biola, H K, and Hernan Barstow. Liddell won twenty-three medals, a first, three second, I'm not going to read them all off, and they had a team of third graders that won all three of their events. Harvest won eighteen medals, two first, two second. Roosevelt won nine medals, one second. McKinley won eight medals, two second. Biola won eight medals, one first, one second. Hernan Barstow won six medals, one second. And H K won one medal, second place. Overall, Central Unified earned seventy-seven medals out of two hundred and eighteen that were awarded at the event. And we also won seven first-place medals. So a really good showing for our elementary science Olympiad teams. And then I get to the high school. So East celebrated Culture Week last week. Different cultures were represented throughout the week. And on Friday, there was a culture fashion show in the pack during lunch. They had their open house and they had performances up on the stage and teachers were engaged with parents and they ended with a scholastic award being, the scholastic awards being handed out in the pack. They had an entrepreneur showcase as well for ROP programs and clubs that showed what they have been working on before the open house. And then we had our FCC L A. There's a lot to say there. They had seventeen students. You've heard some of this. I'm just going to briefly go over a little of what they said, but there were a bunch of, of awards that happened at that conference. Seven members from East received their Red Rose Awards. Nine earned chapter degrees. Three earned region degrees. And Eva Barrios was elected and stalled for Region Eight reporter. So many, so many amazing things happened at that conference. There's a whole list of names and I can send them to you, but we had a bunch of kiddos that won all kinds of medals for their, their hard work. And you already heard that they're going to be heading to Seattle, Washington in July, June, end of June, July. And then finally, you also heard about the, the FFA already, but I just wanted to let you know that it was brought to us and something that was added in addition to all the awards, they're planting a new vineyard with three new types of grapes and for the first time they'll have wine grapes. And they're also building a new goat and sheep market animal barn and they're really proud of it. So thank you very much.
May I invite up Angie Geary, C S E A president?
Good evening, Board members and cabinet members. Thank you for having me tonight. I just wanted to follow up about the job study we've been doing. We finally met with all, probably about sixty-five job descriptions with our members. It was a lot of work, but well worth it. We've learned a lot about them, what they do, how much more they go above and beyond, what their job requires of them. It was a really good experience. We are in negotiations with Mr. Quayre to finalize everything and get something, you know, compared, that we both agree on. We've done a pretty good job about it. He's been a very good right-hand person, I may add. We worked very well together and we had, we pretty much got everything done. We got one or two left to negotiate with him. We're hoping to have everything done by the end of June. So I just really want to thank him, Brittany Jamie, my VP Alex Lopez, and my second VP, Dominic Robles. This was a lot of work for us. It's been very challenging, but with all of us together, we made a good team and we made it happen and we're at the end of it. So thank you guys for also giving us the opportunity to do this. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We next turn to Superintendent and Board Communications.
All right. Got a couple of things for you. Last week, we recognized three hundred and eighty-three students in front of their families and their peers for meeting the criteria to become reclassified as English proficient. This year, we already have ten percent reclassified and once we get our Sback scores back, probably early June, we are hopeful for, we anticipate, being at seventeen percent reclassified. In addition, I'm excited to share that the order just was shipped off for seals of biliteracy, which is kind of the next bookend for students, and we have a hundred and sixty-nine seals of biliteracy on order. Just by comparison, last year, we ordered fifty-eight. So there was a change in criteria, which helped open up the ability for a student to meet the qualifications appropriately for that seal of biliteracy. So we will be affixing the seal on graduation diplomas. In terms of receipt, we had six qualify in language of Mong, ten French, ten Punjabi, and a hundred and forty-three Spanish. And as a special note, two students from Justin Garza will be, had demonstrated their proficiency in three languages, English, Spanish, and French. So looking forward to more of that. This week, those of you who have seniors know, I think this week is the last week, maybe even tomorrow, to declare where you will be attending school. So I wanted to share with the UC Merced interest and support from you all. Right now, this is what we know to date. Central East High School had nineteen accepted in the UC bound. Two so far have committed. That doesn't mean that they go when they get accepted, but we may have a few more come in. Central High School, five were accepted, one is committed so far. And Justin Garza, twenty-three were accepted and two have committed so far. So as we get more information for our plans for seniors, we do want to share that with you. I also want to mention, and you'll start to see more information on that, a huge thank you to Dr. Bowright and her team. Last week, at the State Board of Education, they approved our community schools implementation grant to the tune of eight point two million dollars that will be coming into our community to fund community schools at six schools to start for us. That's our first start. Biola, Roosevelt, Steinbeck, Teague, Madison, and Tilly will be our first community schools to get off the ground and we're looking forward to sharing more information with you. Thank you so much for those efforts. And then just a reminder, tomorrow night, we will be celebrating the opening of our aquatics complex at Justin Garza High School. And following the ceremony, we don't have to swim, but we will have some, some of our relay teams there. But following that, we'll do a brief tour around the athletic field soccer complex for you to see that as well, so we hope that you can attend. And Maria, they should be arriving at five thirty? Okay. That's all for me. Thank you.
Other Board Communications?
I just wanted to appreciate the, the team. I had an opportunity to go to the multilingual celebration. It's just amazing to see the, the kids make that, make that leap in terms of their, their new positions moving out of V L classes. Want to also just highlight again, Teacher Appreciation Week for all of our teachers last week. And just actually offer just a, a short. And just actually offer just a short moment of silence. I know we've lost some staff members and a few people have reached out to me and just in terms of what they meant. So I'll just ask for a brief moment of silence and we'll continue with our agenda.
We move on to comments from the public on any items that are not on the agenda.
Yes, we have one comment from Brandon Sisk.
I want to thank you all for taking the time to hear me speak. It's very important that you hear the issues that are impacting parents throughout the school district. My family and I are residents of Area Two and Yacenia, we, Trustee Correa, we've had the pleasure of speaking on a couple of occasions. The reason I'm talking to you tonight is because of the decision to close the Campus Connections Program. So the decision which was made available to parents on April 16th left parents scrambling with very little leeway or roadway to make a decision as to where we're going to provide care for our kids for the summer. Initially, I was told that there were no additional summer programs offered by the district. That's since been corrected. The after-school program is yet again expanding into the summer program. But the applications were not made available to all parents who reside in the school district. It was, on some accounts, merit-based, on some accounts, not merit-based, on some accounts, there were enough spots for everybody. Depending on who I talked to, there were a limited number of spots for all the students. I ended up getting an application for this program from another parent who was sent, who was sent the application. And we don't know why they were sent the application over some of the others. We're piecing that information together. It's made it very difficult for us to make accommodations for our kids for the summer. The programs that are available out there, now, we're not aware of all of them. They're few and far between, the capacity is limited, the expense is great. And there's been no support from the district as to what resources are available. What I want to impress on you tonight is that the decision to close the Campus Connection Program and the result, the resulting limited capacity of the summer programs that are offered by the school district have made it incredibly difficult for parents to make those, make those adjustments. We're looking for programs that will provide a safe opportunity for our kids, that will enrich them in some way. And so if I had to ask anything of the trustees or the school district tonight, it would be, one, can we get a list of resources that are available, nonprofit and for-profit organizations that are available that can accommodate the same hours and that are hopefully reasonably costed, cost. Two. Did I? I lost. Okay, I thought, was that me? Okay, anyway. The second thing would be just that we expand the, or we continue the Campus Connection Program for the duration of the summer to give parents a little more time to make those arrangements for the following year. And the third would be to expand the after-school program for the summer to more families. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We next move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion? We have a motion by Trustee Solis, a second by Trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. We move on to our action items. Our first item is our Student Discipline Case, Case 2324011. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the recommendation for discipline.
We have a motion by Trustee Correa, a second by Trustee Cervantes. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero. We move on to action item number two, approve revised board policy. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Boatwright.
Thank you. So BP 5121 for grades and evaluation of students is returning tonight for approval. I did meet with a representative group of teachers and administrators on April 30th to review and discuss recommended changes to the current board policy. The only change from the version that I brought to you on April 23rd is the word unexcused has now been unstruck. There was some additional feedback that I received just prior to tonight's meeting and so I'm happy to respond to that as well.
President Singh, we do have a comment as well on this item.
Sure, we can listen to the comment first.
First comment is from Laura Bolton.
Hi, I just wanted to let you know that I was part of that group that came together. It was a very productive group. We had a wide range of teachers from high school, middle school, and elementary. Every high school, every middle school was represented, two elementaries were represented. We had a wide range of subject matter represented in the room. We had English, math, science, social studies, we had a counselor. We had people that are on the on-track team that are doing that work. It was a really, really productive discussion. Although you didn't see much change, what the bulk of our discussion was, that we came around to, was that it was really important for that group of people to participate in the drafting of the administrative regulation that will come next. A lot of the things, the concerns, the suggestions that were made by that group really belong in that. And so we are going to be meeting again, that same group, as many of them as we can, to go over the draft that's being put together. And I do feel very strongly about it. It was very productive, it was very positive. And it's really important that the people who are the ones that are responsible for the instruction and the assessment be the ones that are also having a large part of the say in how those grades are developed. And we want those grades to be accurate, we want them to reflect what the students have learned, how proficient they are in those standards. And we want to make sure that teachers are the ones that are doing the largest part of deciding those grades. That, right, is protected in ed code for a reason because we are the ones that know what they should have learned, we are the ones that are doing the teaching, and so we should be the ones who are assigning the grades and are determining whether or not they need more time with the subject or whether they're ready to move on. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
None at this time.
Trustee Correa?
Thank you. I do have some recommended revisions. I gave you all, and I did provide it to admin, but it was last minute. I literally walked in and provided it to them. Most of my recommendations acknowledging that our board policy is just a broad policy so that then it guides the administrative regulation, which is what Laura Bolton was talking about. In the first paragraph, I think you all can see my scribbles, I would like to add academic performance and achievement. In the second paragraph, I'm requesting that we add, after the first paragraph, or two, sorry, after the first sentence as part of it, the student's grade in an equitable manner. Again, because this is going to be a broad policy and as you read the rest of it, there are some broad terms that are really left to interpretation. And I just want to make sure that as there's discussion about what that AR looks like, that we are aware and cautious about the need to be equitable. When we're looking at providing certain projects or portfolios, this is where the teacher has a discretion to determine how much is something worth, how much extra credit is worth. That's not our responsibility as a board, so I would recommend that we add that. I believe the third paragraph would also add to the first sentence, a uniform and equitable grading system. The following paragraph to the first sentence, it says, "A teacher shall base a student's grade solely on the quality of the student's academic work." I am requesting that we strike solely and the quality of. If my interpretation of the policy is that we want to focus on performance and achievement, to me, quality is left to be broadly interpreted. That can mean whether the student has achieved and is improving, but also in its worst interpretations, what was the student's pensmanship and how clearly was that? And I think that that's not what this policy is supposed to address. There are two references in the policy to his or her. I recommend that that be stricken to the student, just so that we are more inclusive in our language. And then I have a question about the last paragraph, or the last sentence in that paragraph. It says, "Other elements that are not a direct measure of knowledge and understanding of course content such as attendance, effort, student conduct, and work habits shall not be factored into the academic grade but may be reported separately." Can you provide any feedback? I understand where attendance or student conduct or work habits, but I would be concerned where effort, and I know that some of the teachers have expressed that that may be interpreted if there's growth, if there is some effort to continue to learn the material, that there should be some ability to factor that in.
Yes, so effort is noted on the student's report card. It's a letter. It's an N. I didn't walk in with those letters, they slipped my mind, but it is noted there. But grades, what we are saying is that grades should be based on a student's mastery of grade level standards. You know, whether they master that content in a test, a multiple choice test, or a project, it could be, you know, some type of a discussion, but that it's based on a student's knowledge and understanding of the content. It's not based on, you know, whether or not a student came prepared to class with a pencil in hand, for, just for an example.
Okay. Thank you. And then on this first page, my last recommendation would be, the second to last paragraph says, "Whenever a student misses an assignment or assessment due to an excused or unexcused absence." To me, excused or unexcused seems redundant if those are the only two types of absences. If there are more absences that I'm not aware of, then I, that would make sense to me. It's my understanding as well that perhaps that was a recommendation from teachers. I can take it or leave it, that just doesn't make sense to me. Unless, are there more absences other than an excused or unexcused absence?
No, those are the absences. They, the recommendation from the group that I met with was to leave excused or unexcused just to eliminate any ambiguity.
Okay.
Can I add something really quick? I think that for further clarification, without it, the assumption often is excused only. And so by adding both excused and unexcused, it makes clear that if you're unexcused because you're out sick but don't have a doctor's note, you should still be given the same opportunity as a student who had a doctor's note.
Okay. Well, that would not be an appropriate interpretation or read of just the plain language, but given that knowledge, I'll leave it in. And then the second page, the final recommended request is to strike his or her and just put the student's disability. I am requesting that the board accept my recommendation, so the only thing that wouldn't be changed would be excused or unexcused, but I am requesting that everything else be I'm happy to discuss further or answer any questions about my recommended changes. Thanks.
Trustee Solis?
Question to Dr. Boatwright. With the changes presented, do you have any issue with them?
I do not.
Motion to approve. As submitted.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Solis, we have a second by Trustee Correa. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
I have a just like quick request, actually. I'm really impressed with how administration and our teachers have been collaborating on this to come up, to find an administrative regulation that meets the moment, you know, in our education system and also brings all parties and stakeholders together. I would appreciate if, once the focus groups have settled on administrative regulation, that it come back to the board for a presentation, just so we can be aware of what the new admin rate is.
Thank you. We'll make sure to bring that back. We move on to action item number three, approve college and career access pathway agreement and addendum. Dr. Boatwright?
Thank you. This item returns from the last meeting for your approval and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or discussion? If not, can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Sellers, a second by Trustee Kervon. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero one with Trustee Correa's abstaining. We move on to item number four, approve annual declaration of need for fully qualified teachers 2024 to 2025. Assistant Superintendent Collegian.
Thank you, President Singh. This is an annual item that comes to the school board in the, in the spring in accordance with the California Education Code and the expectations of the California Teacher Credentialing, also known as CTC. The district provides an annual declaration for need of highly qualified teachers prior to placing them on internships or short-term staff permits or provisional internship permits. By submitting this annual declaration, the district certifies that a diligent search has been conducted to recruit fully qualified teachers for specified areas. The areas for such internships are in specialized areas such as special education, physics, mathematics, other sciences as well. The 2024-25 Declaration of Need for Central Unified includes permits for current employees who are fully credentialed in other subject areas for limited assignments and also their current authorizations to include specialized fields as noted in the declaration. Administration is recommending approval of the declaration. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions or comments from the board?
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Cervantes, a second by Trustee Correa. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
We move on to item number five, accept gifts to the district. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
Good evening. The district has received several gifts. The first one is Biola received 500 valued gift from Neutrien and Actagro, $200 Visa Card from Institute of Education and Science. Central High School received a donation of $2,250 from Fresno Central Ag Booster. Justin Garza High School received $625 from Patricia Olmstead, $50 from Maria Macedo, and $325 from Andrea Gray, $1,116 from Cross Country Booster Club. Liddell received $750 from Carl Ripken League. Then finally, River Grove Elementary School received $750 from Central Union Cal Ripken League. Administration is recommending a vote to accept the gifts. And as a follow-up, the district will receive a thank you letter to all the donors.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Trustee Sellers.
Second.
Second by Trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining? Motion carries six zero with Trustee Kervon absent. We move on to item number six, and, sorry, thank you to all of our gift, gift givers. Motion number six, ratify agreement regarding Triton Construction Management Services for District-Wide Lighting Project. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis, for your acceptance tonight as an agreement for services by the Triton Consultant Group that specializes in construction management services in connection with the District-Wide Lighting Project. This lighting project consisted of over 20 sites and roughly over 40,000 lamps and ballaces to be replaced with energy-efficient LED lighting. These services are crucial aspect to our building projects. Triton Consultants has a dedicated team of professionals who oversee the project to ensure everything runs efficiently and safely and in compliance with the contract documents. The 0% California Energy Commission loan has a deadline by the end of the year, and in order to expedite this, we had, we needed to have the project occur after, after school with a series of night shifts and around the student's schedules rather than fully engaged during the day as we usually do to avoid classroom disruption. Triton and our district staff have, were able to add two additional sites at no additional cost to the district, and that's at Class and Pershing. And I would like to also mention that our CBO, Mr., Assistant Superintendent Mr. Iqbal, has created a workflow to, to ensure that we follow the contract agreement process correctly and haven't any kind of system failure. So, and after he's done with this workflow, he's going to present this to Superintendent Davis for her comment. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Trustee Correa.
We're ratifying the contract, so the work already started?
Yes, it's, it's nearly completed.
I was just going to ask that. How near?
I would say around 98%.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion from the board?
So moved.
We have a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries six zero with trustee Kerfan absent. Thank you. We move on to item number seven, approve cybersecurity data recovery. Director Martinez.
Good evening, Superintendent Davis, members of the board, and Board President Singh. Tonight, this item's coming direct to action for your approval. The district relies on a system of backup, data backup and recovery in order to prevent loss of data, loss of business operations, and most importantly, loss of student instruction time. With the rise of ransomware attacks against schools, the district would like to invest in a secure and advanced backup system as a, as an additional layer of protection for our data against cyber attacks such as ransomware. The total project cost is 202,000, to be paid out of general funds. Administration is recommending approval, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Martinez. Any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Correa.
How frequent do we need to update the system?
The backup system, we typically look at three to five years, but with the recent trend of cyber attacks targeting backup, we're wanting to make an update to this prior to that timeline.
And I would just make sure that we have a plan to limit who has access to the recovery and a plan for the backup plan, because I did have a case where there was an employee who erased. It was, it's not fun. Not a fun situation, so.
So, to clarify, this would be the server backup system. So if it's on the client side, like a device side, it won't, it wouldn't cover that. This is primary core operations for the schools, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion from the board?
A move to approve.
We have a motion by trustee Correa, a second by trustee Solis. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those abstaining, motion carries six zero with trustee Kerfan absent. Thank you. We move on to our information items. Item number one, receive information regarding attendance boundaries. Superintendent Davis.
I'm going to share this with Assistant Superintendent Iqbal and also our Director of Facilities, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you, Mr. Alderman. Now, we had moved that over. So this item is presented for your first review of the information that have been gathered during our community regarding the proposed attendance boundaries. We did provide for you the attachments as one bundle that are also attached for our public to have and have updated the public-facing website for boundaries as well for our community to follow along. If I can just orient you to the resources that are included for review. So, we do have the elementary and high school maps that you have seen at previous meetings and saw if you attended town halls. In addition, on, overlaid on those maps, the team have added both as requested, the current enrollment. You were used to seeing the projected enrollment, and also what has been added is information on transportation, the effect, the impact of routes, which we'll speak to this evening. Following those elementary and high school maps, you can go back just one slide, sorry. The other way. Oh, you're going the other direction, my friend. So I'll keep speaking. After the elementary and high school maps, there is also a section or an attachment for the community-developed maps. So we did give an opportunity, as we spoke to, for our community to submit their own maps, and then the facilities team talked to them about what they were trying to accomplish. You will see those notes handwritten on their map, and then a map was developed, which is also attached and named by the group or person that submitted that map. The projected enrollment is included and the demographics is included on that, and our transport team, transportation team is doing some analysis of those maps as well. We did include the current boundary maps. We also included the town hall input as it was collected. Each group, if you were at a town hall, sat around a table, one person recorded all notes. All of those notes are attached under the town hall attachment or tab. And then we also conducted an online survey, which we'll go to on the next slide. Those results, in summary, the elementary preferences and high school preference were asked, and then we also gave them a space for them to attach any comments that they would like to attach to, and, and so that is also made available for you, all of their comments. If you see three dots in a row, all I have omitted from their comments is if somebody used a student's name within the survey, so I did take out the, the student's name on the survey, otherwise you have the, the raw data. In summary, however, when the 618 respondents participated in the survey, the elementary option preferences, you can see, or perhaps in front of you if you can see printed out, the predominant favorite was option one for elementary, followed in, in part by option two and option three. For secondary, the prevailing favorite was option A, followed by option E, and then in small favor, B, C, and D. And so what we'd like to do this evening before we dig in and just be ready for your questions, is briefly go over some highlights from, based on the feedback of, you can go the next slide, based on the feedback that we received during the town hall, online transportation analysis that Jesse and his team did, and so, and then in the executive summary we provided for you, we highlighted both option one and option three. As you know, in terms of scope, there were a lot of questions that were coming in, and the option one, as I just mentioned, was favored, both on the line, online survey and in-person. Some of the comments, if you read through all of the notes to it, that were consistently mentioned, that made this a favorite, are that they keep kids closer to their communities, creates a reduction in enrollment for many schools. This is the one that affects the most schools, eight elementary schools, and seems to distribute change across these sites within this area of our district evenly. Director Bath and his team took a look at transportation and indicated that the bus time doesn't increase for students and will significantly decrease the number of bus routes that will be necessary because of the close proximity of, of these campuses. If I can for a moment as well, often throughout this discussion, we may mention unduplicated count or funding, just for a reference or as a reminder. The unduplicated pupil count is a count of our enrollment that is gathered in the CalPads state reporting process. It is a count for students who qualify for free or reduce lunch, are identified as an English learner or a foster youth, and whether or not they are, all three of those, meet all three of those criteria, they're counted only one time. And that is a determining factor for how funding for us comes forward or is calculated for supplemental and concentration funds. You see that in the LCAP, you see that in their single plans. It follows specifically to the student. And so in some of this, this feedback, you know, we make note that option one does not lower the average unduplicated count for the campuses, which was one of the discussions at the boardwork session on April 2nd. While option two for the elementary map was the second favored, it also was the most significantly criticized, so I didn't highlight that one, but I did want to point out just a few things on option three. It does impact the fewest amount of schools, which was one of the aims, was to disrupt the fewest amount of students. It did receive the least attention, so I, I do share that. It does reduce transportation routes. It does align more closely to the middle school feeder pattern we currently have, and that specifically, if you look at that option three map and you see the very straight line across Shields-Brawley and also Steinbeck's southern border of Shields, that is also the, the middle school boundary, and so that was, was a cleaner tie. It does maintain a high level for unduplicated count, therefore funding, for the opening of Shields and Brawley to make it very close to Tilly Elementary, Hanfontilly, which is across that Shields Avenue. The, the elimination on this map, it does eliminate the pocket along Shields and 99 that is in option two, and, and, and so the bus route time for those students to travel, that was in option two, up to. The Liddell area was a concern that was regularly asked about, as well as just having students so close to a new school who have been being bussed to Roosevelt for some time. There was question and concern about why we would continue to maintain that rather than allowing them a, a community space, but we know that there was, there was certainly some interest and discussion around that. We, we want to acknowledge that. In terms of, of our interest in, in this, what I would say, with option one being favored and balancing capacity-wise across campus, we do know that in one and three, there's significant interest in Hernan Barstow to look towards that 2029 year and try to lower their enrollment, and neither of those maps do it. There, should option one be of interest to the, the district? We would like to at least throw into the conversation that if that map is, is of interest to the group and, and one to move forward, we'd like to also then discuss whether or not we, there is interest in making a few minor adjustments to the middle school feeder pattern, because the way this is drawn, there's three corners. One at Shields-Brawley, south of Shields, one at Central Elementary, north of Shields, and the new development across from Harvest that is now in this, both of these projected to be Roosevelt, that with a few tweaks to the middle school boundary would capture those into the middle schools closest to them, so. We move on to secondary highlights. I'll move, and just by way of organization, we're highlighting a few, then we'll go through what's available on each map for transportation. We'll go through each community map and then, and then we'll move out of the way and, and get ready for, for discussion you may have. Secondary garnered the majority of conversation, I will say, at town halls and, and a lot of the conversation in any of the, the sessions I was in or heard about. The favorite is option A, both in online and town hall, for the reasons that it is similar to current. It does not move the middle school boundaries. There is a belief that it keeps neighborhoods together and that Veterans Boulevard is an advantage. Bus time will not increase, the pickup time will not start earlier than 17, 7:15 in the morning as it does now, but it could decrease for some riders. The country school route seems to be one of the longest, as was shared by Director Bath, and depending on what time you get picked up on that bus route, we can certainly speak to that. Various opinions were shared on map A on whether or not, because this does have Biola attending Central High School, and we had really a mixed set of input that we received. We actually received more questions about if Biola is at Central High School, what are the pathways, what are the resources, what are the opportunities that would be available there? But we did have some also share that while some like the closeness of Central High in this map A, there are some that would prefer to go to Justin Garza from that community, so wanted to share that information with you. High school option E is programmatically most interesting to us. We recognize it was not the favorite of our community, but when we look at program and the opportunity that it brings from a middle school to high school feeder pattern, we would be remiss if we didn't identify as educators that that is, there's, there's some definite merit to that. It did not receive the community overwhelming support. It does have attached to it a secondary feeder pattern that would need more work, because the secondary feeder pattern has a, a projected enrollment for El Capitan to be very small, there would need to be some adjustments to that, and I don't know that the, the board is interested in, in doing or, or engaging in that. Transportation did alert us in their analysis that option E will require more bus routes because they're doing a little bit more weaving between community, and certainly some students up who attend Rio Vista currently would have a, a longer time, five, seven, 10 minutes to get to Central East perhaps than where they might be getting en route because of Veterans Boulevard. And while that is true, what, as I mentioned, in terms of transportation, what, what I hope you saw in the transportation analysis and that we can certainly speak to is, there is no, in any of these opportunities or options, does not scoot our time for beginning pickup any earlier, and it does not require none of these prompt us to, to need additional buses, because for what is no longer needed at elementary, it would be scooped up for the additional needs at high school on, on any of these maps. So if we can speak to the transportation, Amir, if you want to go through those, and then just briefly, we'll share the community maps, and then.
All right. I'm just going to recap what Superintendent Davis said about option one. If you look at option one, we'll require six less routes, six less buses for option one. Option two, we'll need two less buses for option two, after the analysis we did, and for option three, again, we'll require six less buses. So as you can see in the elementary option one and two, all of them will need less buses. In terms of high school option one, A, we will, it's a, it's a kind of a wash, we will, there won't be needed any buses, so it'll be the same. Option B, we will need, well, we'll need, I mean, seven less buses will be required for option B. This is option C, we will require, or we will need additional eight buses for option C, and for option D, we will need additional 12 buses. And for option E, we will require additional seven buses for the routes. So those are the kind of the summary of all the buses we require for each routes, each options. And then Mr. Rodriguez is going to talk about the community maps and how we developed it.
So, thank you. These, these maps were gathered at the, at the respective town halls, and this first one was an elementary school option, number two. So what we did- So what we did, what we did on this particular thing is that they all, every one of the community members wrote something on the actual map that they were drawing. So this particular community member, is that the right one? No, I'm on a different one. Let me apologize. Yeah, let me go and take this one out. This one's Wagner. Yeah, so that's Wagner. I don't have, why don't I have that one? Okay, let me come back to this one. Well, this one here is that they wanted to move the Liddell annex up towards Hernan Barstow and to grab some of the students there. She indicates on the map that it would be socioeconomically viable. But when we did all the scenarios, you can tell that it is not. You're down to 60, yeah, 60%. And so even though it looks appealing, you know, geographically, it's just not viable.
If I can interject really quick, on the printout for this, I want to be clear. In the bottom right corner, it looks like it says 34%. The three from the page number is on top of it. Please make a note it's 74% and we'll correct that.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, there we go. Okay. Next one here. Okay, this one here, okay, this is the one that I had up. So this one here, on the comment, the community member mentioned the new houses on Grantland pay higher taxes next to the three schools, so they should be at Harvest and not have to go to Roosevelt Elementary School. They have another bullet here that has new elementary schools should take the Liddell students on Valentine Street so kids can be close to school. So when we did the analysis, it shows that the community input map for option two relieves overcrowding at Harvest Elementary, but Teague will significantly impact, be impacted the start of 2025. This scenario does not appear to offer enough additional enrollment to Roosevelt and Teague and remains much too large. Socioeconomic balance at Barstow is down at 66%, much below target, while Shields and Brawley and Teague sit over the 90% unduplicated number. It's not ideal. And Park West to Roosevelt might solve several of those concerns, but the property taxes at Park West was one of their criteria. Therefore, the proposed boundary map is not viable. Okay, the next one. This is another one submitted at one of the town halls. This one here, this was map option number two. And their reasoning was they have brand-new homes that are being built on Grantland and will be paying higher taxes for three schools across from them. Another bullet point that they have is Dakota and Polk boundary can be placed at the Teague or Roosevelt. So when we did the analysis based on the drawing that they submitted, this community map for option two relieves overcrowding at Harvest Elementary. Teague Elementary will be significantly impacted starting in 2025. And again, the scenario does not appear to offer enough additional enrollment to Roosevelt and Teague remains much too large. Socioeconomic balance at Barstow is down at 66%, much below the target level, while Shields and Brawley and Teague sit over 90% unduplicated, not ideal. Park West to Roosevelt might solve some of their concerns, as I mentioned earlier. Therefore, this proposed boundary is not viable. Another one that was submitted from the parent table, this particular one. So this one here has a few comments on it, and this is the option two map. So north of Hernan to Liddell, north of Hernan, east of Riverside Drive. Option two, the rationale, River Bluff will be at 917 and Liddell will decrease to 563, adding the neighbor, I'm just reading the comments that are on the actual community member who wrote this, plus Liddell will decrease by 563, adding the neighborhood north of Hernan to solve, to solve both. Transportation from Shields to 99 alternates them. Question, how many kids are in the triangle that would be bused? So that particular answer to that question is 262 on this particular, on the annex. And this map, the community map two impacts students that are directly across the street from River Bluff that will be getting assigned to Liddell. The chart only shows the effects to Shields and Brawley, River Bluff, and Liddell. On the surface, the major challenges with this are it removes the unduplicated balancing by having the Roosevelt annex assigned to Liddell, making River Bluff overcrowded and once again concentrates the socioeconomic count at Shields and Brawley Elementary School as well as pushing its capacity limit at opening. Here's another one that was submitted by one of the members. The notes on this one, make sure I have that right, same one here. Yep, that's right. So with all the new developments being built, housing taxes around Harvest are high. The schools are part of the selling point for those houses. The houses across from Grantland should be included at Harvest. Roosevelt can include Ashland and Polk down to Shields. Teague can add the area northeast corner of Ashland and Hayes. All of this allows the families near Shields and 99 to go to a school close to them, helping with transportation. Once we analyze this, it's almost the same as the other two, that the community map for option two relieves overcrowding at Harvest, but Teague Elementary will be significantly impacted based on our data, starting in 2025. So this scenario does not appear to offer enough additional enrollment to Roosevelt and Teague and remains, Teague remains much too large. Socioeconomic balance at Barstow is down at 66%, much below the target, while the Shields and Brawley, Teague sit over 90% unduplicated. It's not an ideal situation, therefore this proposed boundary map is not viable. Okay, now we're moving on to the high school option A comment that we had from the public. They wanted to see some of the, what it would look like for Garza to actually, to take the Viola students into Garza. So this particular one here, as you see in the red, that this map highlights the challenges of this geography. While the shapes look sensible to a geographic alignment, it creates significant overcrowding at Central East High School and not enough enrollment at Central High School. Suggested adjustments will not change the numbers for Justin Garza, and therefore this map is not viable. So the suggested would be to move the Shaw Avenue down to Ashland for Justin Garza. So that's, even if we were to do that, there's not enough growth to actually change the numbers. And we did that analysis. I'm sorry. This one here, I received via email after one of the community town hall meetings. This one here, again, it looks good, but when we started doing the analysis, the community input map for high school option E will significantly impact Central East High School. This scenario does not appear to offer enough additional enrollment to Central High School. And you see that in red. Therefore, this proposed boundary map is not viable. There's another one, I think, after this one. So the, yeah, that's it. No, that was it. Yeah. Okay, so map E, if you recall, had an additional middle school map attached to that. So this one here, the same community member wanted to see what it would look like if we increased the numbers at Glacier Point and at El Capitan. So the community input map for this middle school option E will significantly impact El Capitan. This scenario does not appear to offer enough additional enrollment to Glacier Point. And you can see the numbers where we highlighted them in red. And therefore this proposed boundary map is not viable. Is that it? Okay.
Sorry, trustee Creffon?
Thank you. I had a quick question for.
Oh, sorry, do we have any comments from the public first?
No, these comments are, I don't have any comments from the public at this time. I do have a question on the 260 number that we're getting from the Liddell annex on map. I believe it's number two for other schools. In a previous work session, when we requested this map to be created and looked at, the request was for the dividing line to be along Selland Avenue and, it's a little bit north, I think it's Raphael Avenue, along that backyard fence. Is that true today for this map?
Yeah, keep going back. I think it's the.
Selland Avenue is a residential street inside the neighborhood?
Yeah. You're on the right track. Just keep going and pass all that. You're almost there. One more.
Go the other direction. I can begin to answer that and then they can fill in. I went back and checked on that. The question had come up. Selland has a corner. It goes Selland up a couple blocks and then to Fountain Way, then stops and then starts again further north. And so instead of Selland being used so that it didn't move in and out of the community, Marty was used because that was a consistent line moving up the street. So I'm sorry I did not include that in the original summary of that.
And you're correct, Superintendent Davis.
Okay. So why not use, can you explain again, why wouldn't use that Selland Avenue or even just create, separating, keeping that whole neighborhood together of, you know, Selland Avenue to the north and then that small little block, you know, going toward Raphael, toward Dakota? That would then keep that entire neighborhood together?
It can. The design of the map was to try to allow the entire community, as I understand it, I don't have a Google Earth map to show, but when they looked at Selland, that is the smallest corner alongside Shields. And I don't remember how many homes are in that one neighborhood that routes to Fountain Way, but when they looked at Selland, it starts and stops between Shields and Ashland or Shields and, or Clinton and Shields? Clinton and Shields, excuse me. And, no, it's the Shields corner. Shields and Dakota. It starts and stops, and they were trying to, throughout all of these maps, pick a road as a division to the neighborhood on east or west to be a consecutive, that's not right, contiguous line, rather than in and out of a neighborhood. So Selland does wrap to Fountain, it stops, it picks back up attaching itself to Dakota. So instead, they moved it to Marty and just did a straight line going up Marty. So for transportation purposes. If you would like, as a board, to redirect that cutout, that's what we're here for the discussion of. But that was the reason why it was kept at Marty.
Yeah, I would request that just because that's not what was requested. You know, if you were, if the demographer were to look at a map of the neighborhood, they could see that, you know, Selland goes, you can just see straight, Selland going north and then very closely aligning to Raphael from Fedora and Robinson, when it gets closer to Dakota, basically keeping that entire neighborhood together.
Trustee Creo?
Do we know how many families, how many homes are being impacted there by the map that trustee Creffon is requesting? Or that, where the line is being drawn?
No, I don't. We would have to go through and look at, do you have that?
Yeah, it was significant. I don't recall.
Well, it's 262 for that entire area.
Right.
I think the question trustee Creo just asked is for that corner of Selland and Fountain. Or Selland, Raphael, Selland again, right? That's what you're asking for? We'd have to go back in. I say we, they would have to help us with the map to tell us the numbers.
Right.
Because my concern would be, is it a significant number consistent with the direction that the majority of the board, or the board has provided in creating these maps, to spend the time in doing that? Because the time from now to the next meeting is very short. And that's another map that we'd be looking at.
This is consistent because this is what was requested previously at a work session. We did not request it to come from Marty. We requested it at Selland Avenue.
Right, but the response was that it doesn't provide a continuous and it didn't keep the neighborhood together. It's my understanding that the map that was provided does keep the neighborhood together, correct? So what is the goal that you're trying to accomplish with the change in the neighborhood?
In that Marty is also not entirely, you know, keeping the neighborhood together. It does split off in Dayton and they're continuing it again, which does not connect to that part of the neighborhood closer to Dakota. So no matter what, there is a split in that neighborhood. We can look on Google Maps and see that, but previously we had requested that Selland Avenue, keeping the entire single-family development together. And then the demographer then did not do that. Now, if the maps had labeled Selland Avenue, then we could have seen that and before this meeting today, but it was not labeled.
I understand the problems with the map with the Liddell add-on sitting over here way across the district from Liddell. If you continued with this map, using the Shields and Brawley north boundary as Dakota, carrying it all the way out to the railroad tracks, and then that would leave you a northern smaller triangle and just throw that in with Steinbeck, that would still keep the areas whole, more whole than it would be to ship these kids all the way to Liddell. Would that get you where you want or no?
No.
Okay. So you're looking at just, your priority would be to hold that whole current triangle that's labeled Liddell together?
Do you have a comment presenting?
As far as I understand, what your request is, trustee Creffon, is not necessarily keep this particular triangle per se. It's just that the initial request was a slightly different street. So it's not necessarily this. I think it's just the general sort of configuration of how to. So i- it, it's, it's not necessarily this. I think it's just the, uh, the general sort of configuration of, of how to, uh, best. Make sure that we're setting up all of our schools as best as possible for, for, um, for an opportunity for success.
Then I must, I don't understand then. I, I assume from what he was saying that his priority is to keep this neighborhood together.
Ri- right, with, but with, um, so, so the current, the current configuration of option two is splitting that, is splitting a particular community. So he, he is suggesting, as far as I understand, a sort of a different, a different street to be able, because a different street to better keep that together. Because it's already, it's going through a neighborhood.
Okay.
I guess the question is whether there's consensus and what I was trying to gauge is, with all due respect, trustee Krefan, is it. The appropriate use of our resources to create another map when we have to, at some point, we're gonna have to choose one map. So just adding another one, our, our ability to have th- these discussions is gonna end. I mean, we have to, we're gonna have to act at the next time. So I guess for me, I would say no, but if there's consensus from the board as a majority to bring back the map that's being requested, well, we, we move by majority rule.
Respectfully, trustee Creo, this is not requesting a new map, although I will, I do have ideas for that later. Um, this is just clarifying what the board had already requested with regards to option two at a previous work session.
Trustee Solis?
So I'm still in the fog. Sir, what, what, what would satisfy you? How about if we alter option two?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Instead of a completely new map, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is there consensus for that?
I, I, I think there is consensus for that. Because, like, in, in terms of swap out. I, I, I think I want to at least say on, on, on record and maybe it's, um, for, for us to just make an internal note. I think it's, uh, just having been able to compare our process with redistricting versus this. I, I really hesitate ever to, to use a vendor that cannot provide dynamic maps to us. Because I just think that, um, just look, thinking through the comparison of the process when we're using static maps. Where, uh, we don't have the ability to create dynamic maps. I, I, I don't think this, this is a, a, a best use for us in the, in the future. We are, we are here now. I, I think there is a. I, I, I just maybe asking the board, would there be consensus in terms of, uh, you know, obviously to invite the public for. If, if there is general alignment in some of, at least I guess the thrusts of the, of the map, what the maps are trying to do. But I, I do get the feeling, having talked to some, some of you that, that have shared with me. Uh, there is a desire to look at different configurations here and there, especially on specific streets. Would there be a desire to do a workshop between, uh, now and the, and the, and the next meeting?
Not for me.
I would support that. Any other voices?
Trustee Solis?
Having done this before. It's my experience, you're not gonna find a perfect map. Okay, we're gonna compromise down the road. The question is, how soon are we gonna get to that intersection, okay? So, I mean, I'm not gonna argue the point whether he wants to fine tune option two. Uh, because I got my doubts that option two is gonna be in the running. So, I mean, go ahead and do that if you want. Um, you're not gonna find in a workshop a perfect map. You may agree with the high schools maps, but you're gonna disagree with the elementary maps. You may agree with the junior high school maps, but you're gonna disagree with the high school maps. So, I mean. If your goal is to find a perfect map, it's not gonna happen. Seeing if you're looking at these proposals as well as the community's proposal, because there's some interesting things in there as well. I think we pretty well have the gist of it in these maps. The question is, as a board, what are we gonna choose?
President Singh. Also, this is something I found interesting when reviewing all of our, uh, community input maps. Is that they all use option two, um, as their baseline for when, uh, shifting streets over. So whether option two as is, or, you know, as will, as could be, is what we end up going with. I think it, few people seem to be working through option two as the path forward to finding our best solution. Um, option one, for example, does nothing to alleviate the overcrowding at Hernan Barstow. Which creates a safety issue, you know, for our students there. And, you know, also when it comes to traffic congestion, that we hear a lot from the parents at Hernan Barstow. So that's just one example.
I, I think I'll just share a little bit for myself again, maybe why, why I think, uh, you know, to, to make time for, for us to have a working session, of course, where the, the public can, uh. Can participate as well is, or, or we can hear, 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 hear comments from the public is, we have received so many of these community maps. So, so to me to not. We were essentially given the choice of, are they viable or are they not viable? But the reality is, is I think they don't know that. They're asking this in principle. So, so, so for me, I think it, it, it serves us to serve the, the communities to, uh, because they, they don't have the graphing, uh, you, you know, map where they can. Uh, automatically see, you know, i- if it moved a street over, a move a street north or south, it gets us a better map. Yes, there's no perfect map, but there are better maps and there are worse maps. Trustee Sellers?
If we were to have a workshop, are we capable of having?
Yeah.
If we do have a workshop, are we capable of having the analysts there that can make adjustments around the fly during the discussion? Or are we going to kind of do the same thing all over again, that we take a bunch of comments and then we send it off? And hey, now we gotta wait a time period to get those back.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, please.
John has been learning the software and is turning the maps around. He did the community maps. So internal capacity wise, we talked about it earlier today. Um, anticipating some questions that we had received. If there is interest to change something, we can do it internally. Um, it is faster to do it that way, we are finding. Um, and we'll align ourselves and adjust our workload based on the board meeting dates. I mean, we figured we would need to do some work between now and the next Tuesday night.
In that case, then I will, uh, I'll adjust my schedule and, and support that.
Sorry?
I'm sorry, I, I was on mic. I, the, I guess I wanna be clear in terms of our accessibility to the requests that you have. If the interest is for us to go back and address some concerns that you have on, on something or questions. We can do that and bring it back to the next board meeting as well. Um, that gives us, I mean, we set agenda this Friday, but it gives us a, a week and a half. That's more time than, um, a few days. I mean, we need, we need that time.
Trustee Solis?
If I may, I have some questions regarding a different map. The, uh, map that was submitted by the community member, uh, it was labeled as Wagner. In this map, do we have numbers yet for, uh, transportation impact?
I, I don't have them available to me, but I can, I can have those.
Okay, can we, can we get those?
Yeah, Director Bath has those.
Perfect. Okay.
Good evening, board members. So it was A W, yeah, so. It was real similar to option three. Uh, we were able to keep, uh, still fourteen buses in total. Um, do you want me to just kind of run them down? I have a list.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, starting with Central, three. Harvest was two. Hernan Barstow was two. Um, Liddell was three. Sorry, my eyes are bad. I probably should get a. Uh, McKinley was zero. Roosevelt was three. Shields and Brawley would be zero. Steinbeck was one. Teague and Tilly were both zero.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then the, uh, unduplicated numbers, are these, given that map, are those numbers estimates? Or is that, we've confirmed that that would be what those numbers actually are?
So I confirm with the demographer that those are correct.
Okay. And is that taking into account current developments or anticipated future stuff as well?
Current developments and anticipated, based on, based on the city and county's projections.
Okay. So if I'm reading this correctly, this map and option two for elementary schools are the only two maps that propose that. Address the overcrowding issues at Hernan Barstow. If we were to select another map, do we have any long-term plans of how we're going to address that?
So the two maps that you're, you're speaking of, you're, are you speaking of option two and the community map?
Yes. Yeah, I, I, I wanna know, this is gonna help my decision on what I wanna recommend, because as it's been addressed, you know. There is a overcrowding issue at Hernan Barstow.
Yes.
And, you know, we can add more portables and add more desks, but the rest of the infrastructure in that campus, you know, cafeteria is only so big. Restrooms are limited. Parking, traffic, transportation, everything. Let's see, the only way that we really support that is by keep reducing the, the number of students.
So there's a tentative plan that me and Mr. Eckball have been working on. It has not fully come to fruition yet, but it's, uh, it involves moving, uh, the, the current transportation, uh, grounds. Uh, department out of Hernan Barstow.
Okay.
But that has not, it's just been preliminary, just talking right now and talking to the county. But, uh, we haven't done anything further. Just been some discussion.
Hypothetical in that discussion, then, does that reduce the amount of students on that campus? Or does it just open more space for more students?
It will open more space for those students and there's currently for that school. And I believe we provided it in our Friday report, uh, that there, there have been some design for modernization. And for additional, uh, buildings for, for space, for, for growth.
Timeframe, what would that timeline look like? Is that something that's gonna be two years, five years, ten years?
I would have to get back to you.
Okay.
And, uh, sit down with Mr. Eckball and let's go over our choices.
It's just a tentative plan. If, if there's a growth in Hernan Barstow, that's one of the, one of the options. Because again, there's no expansion in any elementary school, so that would be a good expansion. But that's just a, a draft plan, so.
I mean, every, every map here is showing that there's gonna be an overcrowding issue.
Correct.
Except for two of them.
I think Superintendent Davis wanted to add something?
I, I just wanna be clear to your question. Yes, there are two maps that will address Hernan Barstow's population. And, um, map two is one of them, as is the Wagner community map.
I, I'm gonna ask again, and, and I know there's gonna be differences in, in terms of, uh, uh, you know, not, 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 not wanting to, uh, in, increase the number of maps. But I, I just think that if we have a baseline, there's just so much that we, we can actually do. So if the, if the worry is the length of time, for instance, if I look at option two. Of, uh, moving the students in, in the Liddell Annex to Liddell. Very easily in terms of to keep in spirit what trustee Sellers' concerns are. We could have that at River Bluff where we have the undercapacity current. We can move the, the, the kind of the, um, what's currently the, uh, Highway City sort of spot. Uh, that is, uh, east of ninety-nine to River Bluff where we have room. And, and as, uh, the gunstream maps were to propose, move the Liddell area a little bit down toward Hernan. Right, so there's, there's actually quite a bit that, that, that we can do to make sure that. I, I'm hoping, uh, to, to sort of, uh, again, not a perfect map, but a much better map.
Keeping also in line with that, um, of making a map, this option two even better. Um, when looking at the population projected on option two for Roosevelt and, you know, while this alleviates, you know, Hernan Barstow's population the most out of all of our current maps. Um, but what if we were to even improve that? What if that, um, what in western, northwestern boundary of Roosevelt was shifted more to the north? And would that also help, you know, better utilize our, um, space in our classrooms at Roosevelt and Hernan Barstow? Food for thought, um, as a variation on this map.
And, and just, so I understand Director Roderick is, you, you've learned the software to be able to do this in real time?
Yes.
Wonderful.
Yes, but I, I, uh, cause I'm still a little novice about it. I, I, I turned over, I, I go ahead and prepare it and then I shoot it over to the demographer just to check my numbers. Cause that's one thing I don't wanna.
So, so far, how have you been?
Spot on.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah, Superintendent Davis?
I'm sorry, if I, if I can interject as well. Um, I think for safety of his time as well to do the projects, I, I'm hearing, um, mixed interest. In both additional maps and mixed interest in also the additional time. So if you land on the need for additional maps, perhaps a few members meeting, discussing. Going through this process, because I, I would also imagine that you're gonna want those to be posted and available for public viewing. So if not a group meeting and not the next meeting, I, I would interject, perhaps that's an option. Um, because I do know there are other important items that you do wanna get to as well with that. So perhaps that suggestion can be added into your thoughts.
So, so a sub, a subcommittee?
Yeah, I'd be willing to serve on a subcommittee.
Absolutely, no, I appreciate that.
I would agree, cause that's my concern. I mean, we have two weeks. We have agenda prep Monday for us. I mean, this has to be finalized and our agenda has to be posted by next Friday. Um, so I would be in agreement, uh, to have a subcommittee of at least no more than three in order to comply. And it's just, uh, just to further brainstorm based on the discussion that the board and the direction that they've had. I have no interest in sitting on that committee. Anyone else think we heard? Krefan?
Do, do we have to take a motion to form it before we get the?
No, so long as there's consensus, you're fine, cause it's not a formal, a standing committee.
I would definitely be interested.
There you go. We can't have four. Has to be maximum of three.
Okay. Thank. So, so we, we have a, seems to be a three. So trustee Sellers said he would bow out too, so it'd be trustee Solis, trustee Krefan and myself.
Okay.
And, and the others?
Your mic.
Once the subcommittee submits their renewed maps, are they going out to the community again? Or then we, they're gonna go up to us to an open board meeting to vote on without community input?
They have to be posted. There's not gonna be any additional town halls. I think it's unreasonable, in my personal opinion, to require that our administration do that. It's just not enough time.
Well, I think the whole thing's unreasonable, but that's neither here nor there. Um. So that's how we're gonna proceed?
Yeah, we'll post them.
If it helps you, trustee Solis, I attended all four town halls as well. So.
Okay.
We, we, we have gone out to the community as well.
Yeah, and we also submitted a group of maps. Yeah, and we also submitted a group of maps prepared by administration. We made, gave the community the option to, to submit maps. And now what we're saying is we're going to, as a board, renew, redo our maps from an administration. So that's my point of, fine, I'm assuming next time we won't waste our time and we'll just do the maps ourselves. So, that's fine. Do your committee.
I thi, I think this, well, I do want to make a comment. I don't, I don't think the spirit is saying either or. I think that what we're, we're trying to do is, because the, the maps that were presented were essentially assigned viable or unviable. I think what we're actually trying to do is incorporate some of what, what we thought were interesting suggestions from the community to some of the ones that we initially suggested. So, so I actually think, what we're actually trying to do is take community input into consideration and, and make better maps.
The only thing I would add, trustee Solis, I'm, I'm getting the understanding from your comments that perhaps you think the subcommittee is a waste of time. If you feel that way, and I miss, I'm not misunderstanding, I would suggest that trustee Sellers serve on the subcommittee just because it sounded like he has some interest in redrawing and, and taking that community in feedback versus just hearing and being part of the process, which we'll all be a part of when there's a vote. But that's just my own personal two cents from your comments.
Trustee Solis?
I'm very interested in this process. And I'm extremely interested in see how it works.
Okay, so we have a subcommittee that will, that will meet as soon as possible and, and make sure to have the maps. We appreciate all the comments from the community, all the input from the community. And we, and we hope to make better maps. Thank you. We move on to information item number two. Receive information on measure C and measure D, general obligation bonds, performance audits and financial statement audits for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Assistant Superintendent Nick Ball.
All right. Today we have Mr. Corbin Gunstream, a member of the citizens bond oversight committee. He will say a few words regarding our bond audits.
Well, good evening, board trustees, trustee president Chan, superintendent Davis, thank you, and to the members of the cabinet as well. My name is Corbin Gunstream and I get the privilege of serving on the citizens bond oversight committee. I'm representing the committee tonight to present the findings of the 2023 annual reports that reviewed the expenditures of measures C and D. We met as a committee and reviewed the status of projects, the annual independent financial audit and the internal independent audit for the year ending on June 30th, 2023. The independent financial report identified no audit findings or deficiencies in the internal controls. In addition, the annual independent audit stated that the expenditures of funds were utilized for projects approved by the voters. Both audits were conducted by Crowe LLP. The citizens bond oversight committee, based on its review of the annual financial and performance audit reports and the information received at its meetings, finds the central unified school district is in compliance with the requirements of Article 13A, Section 1B3 of the California Constitution. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the, our facilities staff, John Rodriguez, director of facilities and planning and construction management, Julie Jiriki, construction projects manager, Katrina Loyah, facilities planning, planning manager, Jordan Solis, facilities technician, and Zia Yang, construction projects coordinator. They work tirelessly every day at these construction sites. We have multiple projects going, as you guys are well familiar. They do a great job. I just want to thank them and for their efforts on behalf of the bond oversight committee. Thank you very much.
All right, administration recommends that item be placed on May 28, 24 board agenda for action.
Thank you. Then this will return for action? For consent? Okay, thank you. We move on to item number three. Receive information regarding central unified school district local wellness policy triennial assessment. Director English.
Good evening, board president, board of trustees and superintendent Davis. I'm here with our director of child nutrition, Alyssa Engel, to present information about the triennial assessment.
All right, according to the USDA final rule, local educational agencies must conduct, conduct a comprehensive assessment of the local school wellness policy, a minimum of once every three years, beginning no later than June 30th, 2021. The triennial assess, assessment requires local educational agencies to assess compliance of their local school wellness policy and to make this assessment available to the public. When completing the triennial assessment, there are four major components. Comparison to a model, the model policy WSAT, WSCC, measuring schools' compliance in the local school wellness policy, district's progress towards achieving the goals described in the local wellness policy, and the triennial assessment report to the public.
Thank you. When completing this assessment, we have a template that's used by our California Local Wellness Policy Association as well as the CDE. And the template is described as strongly encouraged but not required. So that's why you see the template in this format. If you look through, I just want to provide some highlights of the assessment based on the information that we use with our templates and those four categories that Ms. Engel has read about. The first one, if you look at page 11, if you excuse me, my voice, I'm coming off of a cold. Page 11 in the policy, our wellness committee did meet and discuss our summary of findings. And this was where we had our comparison of our board policy to that WSAT, WSCC. And this was sent and they provided feedback regarding the items solely that were listed in our actual board policy. So they did not provide information that was not on any of the other items, but just information about how our policy was written and some ideas that to strengthen some language. And so on our meetings with the wellness committee, we did look at that and review that information and just thought about what were our strengths, our areas of growth, and then what could be feasible in the near, next triennial assessment if we wanted to strengthen some of that language in that policy. And number, the second item, if you look at page 13, where it starts with extent of compliance. This was based on survey results primarily from our wellness committee members as well as feedback from different staff members because some of them, we realized, did not have a deeper understanding of the information that the survey was asking. So in one area, they might have thought that their site was not compliant, but they truly were. If we actually spoke to some child nutrition personnel or PE personnel and they didn't have that full purview of the information. So that information is based on that. We did find some areas of, that we have areas of growth to be in full compliance, especially as it relates specifically to director Engel and her work in child nutrition. In part three, we have the results to the public. We do have the summary of findings with the information that's shared with the school site council, our elected members, and translated to our primary languages that serve in our community. And then that information on page 22 is a summary of the work that we and our wellness committee actually decided that we felt that was important, talking about highlighting our strengths, our areas of growth, and then specifically looking at how we wanted to focus on things and better support all school sites with the wellness goals. Back in February, I did bring information to you about our local wellness goals and how we're meeting those throughout the year. And if you see this in the document, there are some hyperlinks with some supporting evidences. And as we move forward through the next three-year assessment, we look forward to finding goals that also focus more on our social emotional. That was something that was brought up in our committee and looking at social emotional wellness. So we started looking into instruction with that. Cassie Smith, our supervisor of campus culture and safety, has started providing work with that. And so we look forward with that as to be in compliance for the next three years. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this triennial assessment.
Trustee Korea?
Thank you very much. I apologize if I missed it, but as a result of your review of the board policy, are there going to be any recommendations for any revisions or ways that we can improve that board policy to better reflect kind of the discussion of the goals presented?
Yes, if you look at page 13, excuse me, page 11, those were some at the bottom of the page. Just specifically looking at some of the areas of policies in other districts. Some of them had specific minutes. Part of the feedback from one of, from the reviewers were like, were that like in PE just mentioned that we provide the opportunity and that was, but we didn't actually specify the number. So those are some things that we were going to review and look at so that in a next cycle of review that we can strengthen that language.
This is probably a better question for our cabinet. But do we have an AR for the board policy? I'm not as familiar with the ARs. That, whether that would be a, a more appropriate place to have that kind of detail and flexibility as there's review, that you all have an opportunity to kind of discuss that and change it? If there isn't, and we don't know, I, I realize I'm asking this and putting you all on point. If we don't, I would suggest if there is consensus and then up to cabinet, whether that's something that perhaps you guys consider working on developing an AR. And of course, we would welcome, and I certainly would welcome, any revisions to our board policy that better reflect the goals of, of the, of the plan. Thank you.
So a quick review shows us that there is no AR that is attached to this.
Thank you. So perhaps that's something to consider. Again, up to your discretion.
No, I think that would be, I think that, that would be helpful for the community members because I know that since we do have these programs and that we are in compliance with so many issues, but then the, the finders who reviewed that only reviewed what was offered to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director English. We'll, we'll have this item returned actually for action.
I believe this was for.
Oh, this is just for information only. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, receive information regarding 2024, 2025 contracts to support academic achievement. Dr. Boatwright?
Thank you. So we have four contracts coming to you tonight. We have AmeriCor, which is a high-dose tutoring program for literacy. We just finished year one of this program at four school sites. We are seeing student progress mid-year. And so we are asking to include an additional four sites for the next school year. We also have Imagine Learning here tonight. Both of these contracts are a one-year renewal of a current contract for secondary credit recovery or credit retrieval, sorry. We have had contracts with Imagine Learning for seven, at least seven years now. There is a meeting that is planned on May 21st just to discuss how this program is going and any changes we might look at. And then also, we have a contract here for Solution Tree. This contract is for the additional days needed for four school sites so that they have the same number of days as our other school sites, which will be a total of seven days for them for next year. I'm asking for approval of these contracts and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Trustee Korea?
One question. So for the Imagine Learning, that's the credit recovery, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I understand that the group that's going to be meeting, probably admin and teachers, I assume, correct? Is there a way, and whether it's even appropriate, to get feedback from students? Just, just from a user-friendly and just from a learning standpoint, I think that also would be helpful. Because I understand it's going to be the admin and teachers who will ultimately determine whether it's meeting the necessary requirements and achievements and standards, but just to get some feedback from students would be great.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. And I would recommend this be put on consent.
Trustee Solis?
So I just have one quick question about credit recovery. Are those courses applicable to not only high school, but are they transferable to college courses or credit? Or do college, let me rephrase that question. Do colleges value those courses the same that they do a regular class?
They do seat-based for our athletes. Otherwise, they're, they can be transferred, yes, to the college, but for our athletes, they don't accept those for competition. Sorry, I'm lost on that one right now. NCAA, thank you. Thank you.
So when we, is that information given to students and their families ahead of time?
It is. Our counselors do meet with the families.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Cervantes?
I just had a quick question. You said in regards to that AmeriCor contract, you're adding four more sites? What four sites? I see the sites on here, but which sites don't currently have that you're adding?
Right, so the current sites this year, we have Tilly, Roosevelt, and Teague and Steinbeck. We are asking to add Madison, Biola, McKinley and Harvest. And I was reviewing this contract earlier today and saw that Har, that, I'm sorry, that Madison was not on that contract. So I've reached out to AmeriCor and asked to have them added in as well.
Okay, so Madison on top of the list?
Right, so it'd be a total of eight school sites.
And these sites were added based on achievement?
Based on need, absolutely. You're welcome.
We'll have this returned. No question on consent? Thank you. We move on to item number five. Receive information on 2024, 2025 student wellness and support service contracts. Dr. Boatwright?
Okay, so we have four contracts tonight. The first one is HANA interpreting. This service provides interpreting services and translation for IEP documents and then also during IEP meetings. We're just finishing our first year of implementation with this company and, and all has gone well. The second contract is for insights to behavior. This provides district-wide access to behavior plans, training workshops and teacher resources. We also have Goal Book here, which provides resources for educators to prepare legally appropriate educational plans. And lastly, we have Paradigm, which supports the district by preparing and submitting all medical claims for reimbursement. We are asking for approval of these contracts tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Korea?
I know I ask this every time. But HANA interpreting, is it our second or third year using them?
So.
Or has it been longer?
Yeah, so we're just finishing our first year. We were using another company. We asked the board to allow us to bring HANA interpreting on this year on a trial basis. And they're working well for us, and so we've decided to go full year with them.
Okay, that, that's what I thought. Are we getting any feedback? Or are we asking for any feedback from our parents? Because I understand this is mandatory for our IEP, but just as far as the accuracy and the translations and interpreting would be helpful if we're not doing that, if we can find a way to do so.
I'm going to invite our special education director, Julie Schaefer, up to the mic.
Thanks.
Sorry, good evening. So we do get feedback from our parents. We send a survey out at the end of the year. We did reach out to some of our families when we first initially started using HANA. We still have the other company. HANA is more competitive in their rates for certain things and the other company is more competitive. And so we do have contracts for both.
But are we going to continue both? Or are we going to transition to just using HANA?
Right now, we're, we're bringing just HANA to the board.
Okay. Thank you.
If no other questions, we'll have this returned on consent. Thank you. Item number six, receive information regarding 2024 to 25 dates for elementary schools attending sixth grade camp. Area administrator Pennington?
Good evening, board president Singh, superintendent Davis and members of the board. So contracts require board approval. Tonight, all 14 of our elementary schools are requesting approval to have students attend sixth grade camp again this year for the 24, 25 school year. Documentation is attached and administration is recommending approval. the 24-25 school year. Documentation is attached, and administration is recommending approval and that these items are placed for action on the May 20, for the May 28th board meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Trustee Coria?
I have more of a request, maybe question. Have we assessed whether, I think we provide $20,000 to each school to be able to support this project or this trip. Have we looked into what it actually costs and whether the $20,000 is still enough money? If we haven't, can we look at that before the next time it's brought back to the board so that the board can consider whether we need to increase that amount? I know that there are schools that do fundraisers, but I'm just concerned just on an equity standpoint. Some families are going to be able, and communities are going to be able to give more than others. So if we can look at that next time, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Trustee Coria, we are preparing an analysis of that information for you.
Thank you.
If no other questions, we'll return this as consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Area Administrator Pennington. Number seven, receive information on the 2024 School Facility Fee Justification Report and Adoption of Resolution Number 2324-43, 2024. Assistant Superintendent Nick Paul.
In the last two years, the cost of construction, including building materials, has gone up by 18%. But our developer fee has remained the same at $4.79. So it means the value of our revenue is going down. However, this year, State Allocation Board has authorized the increase of fee from $4.79 to $5.17. The school district has taken three important steps in regards to the approval of developer fee increase. First, on May 10th, letters were sent to the developer to inform them about the pay fees increase. Second, public notice will be published in the newspaper. Third, there's going to be a meeting on May 23rd at the district office where the developer will get a chance to review their justification report and discuss it with our facility staff. So with that, administration's recommending the item be placed for May 28th agenda item.
Questions from the board? Trustee Coria?
Do you know if the resolution requires that it return under action or if it can come under consent?
I think it has to be under action.
Action, right?
Yeah.
Thanks.
So it'll return under action. Thank you. Number eight, receive information regarding legal services for 2024-2025. Assistant Superintendent Nick Paul.
I've attached our, the fiscal year 24-25 contracts for all the, our legal firm that the district works with. So administration's recommending that item be placed for action on May 28th.
Questions from the board? Trustee Coria?
So I know that as far as the request for legal services comes from the superintendent, but as far as the law firms that we use for like our IEP cases or other, if we're using directors, do we ever ask for any feedback from our other staff to see if we like the firm and the people that they're dealing with?
For our staff, yes, there's constant dialogue on that. And actually, if I can also share, our assistant superintendent has experience with some of these firms from different cities as well. And so there's a question, I believe, with at least one of them to try to expand even the scope for some of the attorneys that may be more skilled in areas that we now need.
Thank you.
If no other questions, we'll return it under consent.
I would request this returned under action, please.
Okay. No problem. It'll return under action. Number nine, receive information regarding the Citizen Oversight Committee application. Director Rodriguez.
Thank you again, Board President, Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Davis. For your information tonight, we have a Bond Oversight Committee membership nomination to fill a vacancy that currently exists on our committee. We've publicized on Parent Square a notification on March 5th to kind of let everyone know that we, we have these vacancies. And we would be, we received an application from Ms. Susan Bennett, and we would be eager to have Mrs. Bennett as a participating member, performing a, a community member at large. Administration is recommending that this nomination return for action on May 28th, 2024.
Questions or comments from the board? If not, we can return this under consent.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for serving, or applying to serve. Number 10, receive information regarding requests for proposals for child nutrition services. Director Engel.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and members of the board. Tonight, I bring to you information regarding requests for proposals for the Child Nutrition Department. Administration is recommending approval on the 5/28/24 board meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If no other questions, then thank you, and we'll have this returned under consent.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, number 11, receive information regarding Resolution 2324-44, approving grant agreement for CalShape upgrade and repair program. Director Bott.
Good evening, Board President Singh, Superintendent Davis, and board members. Tonight, I have an item for, it's a placeholder. I'll be bringing it back next week, or next board meeting for action. This item is for a grant through CalShape for the upgrade and repair of the ventilation units. This grant provides funds for HVAC upgrades and replacements. District approval of the grant documents has a deadline of May 31st, 2024, and I will bring, be bringing this item back at the next board meeting with the grant documents for your approval. The potential grant award is $6 million. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the May 28th, 2024 board agenda for action.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Kurfan?
Thank you, President Singh. So for $6 million, do we know how many HVAC units we would be able to replace or upgrade with that?
So that is part of the assessment and maintenance grant that we previously did. I will have those numbers prior to the next board meeting.
Would we also be able to know which HVAC systems, as in which sites?
Yes. So I'll bring a list of the sites and number of units at each site that qualified, and which ones we'll be moving, we'll be recommending moving forward for.
And how will you or administration be determining which sites or which HVAC units will be prioritized from those that are eligible?
Primarily, we're going to be looking at bar units first. Those are going to be our older units, so on portable units. And then we've done a pretty good job, Mr. Rodriguez and the Facilities Department has upgraded a lot of our school sites on their HVAC. So one of the main points that CalShape looks at is age. So we'll start with age. So our oldest units will get looked at first.
Okay. Thank you.
If I had to ballpark it, if I did a whole school, it'd be close to three schools that I could do.
Okay. Thank you.
No other comments from the board? We can return this under consent. It has to be under action? Okay. Thank you. Number 12, receive information regarding Resolution 2324-45, grant agreement for CalShape plumbing program for remaining school sites. Director Bott.
Good evening again, board members. This item is something I brought at a previous board meeting. This item is also a placeholder. This board item is for the CalShape plumbing grants for the 16 remaining school sites that were not entered into the grant previously. The grant would provide funds to replace plumbing fixtures at 16 sites. Those 16 sites are Central East High School, Central Elementary, Class, El Capitan Middle School, Glacier Point Middle School, Harvest Elementary, Hound Kearney School, Elementary School, Justin Garza High School, Liddell Elementary, Pathway Community Day School, Rio Vista Middle School, River Bluff Elementary, Saroyan Elementary, Steinbeck Elementary, Teague Elementary, and Hound Fawn Tilly Elementary. The grant is pending, and I will return with the documents at the May 28th board meeting. Administration is recommending this item be placed for action at that meeting after answering any questions.
Questions or comments from the board? Trustee Coria and Trustee Salas?
Of the 16 sites you identified, is it going to replace all of the plumbing fixtures or just certain ones?
It's going to be whatever qualifies under the CalShape agreements. It's going to be the gallons used per flush, so toilets, and then same on the sinks or the, what I should say is the faucets.
Okay. And will the document, I suppose the resolution identify how many will be, or is that a lot of detail?
The resolution will not identify. The resolution will identify the dollar amount. The NOPA documents, the Notice of Proposed Award, will identify number of faucets and toilets and urinals at the school sites, but specifically if it's, I'm just going to say, if it's the, the sixth grade restroom at Hound Kearney, it might not say that one specifically, but it'll say this many total toilets at Hound Kearney.
Okay. And then I'm assuming that then part of our maintenance plan, we're keeping track so that as general funds become available or other funding sources to repair those that may need and didn't qualify for this grant are also being upgraded?
Yeah. So we're estimating, the vendor's already working on this. We're just, we're just a couple of days ahead of the schedule. I'm sorry, the board meeting schedule's a little bit ahead of what they were able to provide, but they're estimating close to $900,000. So depending on what CalShape actually approves us for, yeah, those dollars and funds, what we're not spending, we can now reallocate back to doing other things that aren't part of CalShape, but also will improve these, the restrooms.
Got it. Thank you.
Trustee Salas?
That was actually pretty much my question. I wanted to just make sure we weren't going to be replacing fixtures at Justin Garza ahead of older campuses.
Yeah, they put Justin Garza on there. This company, Vert Berge, who was here at the previous meeting, they went ahead and said, hey, look, we're going to do everything. I highly doubt Justin Garza will qualify. Hound Fawn Tilly might have a couple fixtures, but I highly doubt, I highly doubt it. This is more geared toward our older schools, and there's been many iterations of the CalShape program, and a lot of them are due, they focused on the disadvantaged communities, and they try to take care of those areas first.
If no other question, we'll have this returned as consent. And last but not least, item number 13, receive information regarding a purchase of a new mower. Director Bott.
Good evening, board members. With the addition of the new soccer fields, the district needs new equipment to be able to upkeep the fields. Staff has gathered quotes from vendors. RG Equipment provided the lowest quote. RG Equipment is an authorized dealer of Toro, and the district will use Source Well Contract 031121 to purchase the mower. The cost of the mower would be $73,989.52 paid through the general fund. Administration is recommending this item be placed on the May 28th, 2024 board meeting after answering any questions.
Trustee Malling?
Thanks. I just got one question. Do we have any older equipment that we could have, like, used it in that CARB program for the airboard to, to pay for this?
Not on this one. I used the last one two years ago. When I, and the CARB, are you talking about the Valley Air?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the cost of the electric mowers, and we have two of them now in our fleet, haven't been getting the greatest feedback from our crews about using them. Now the cost of them, it would still cost the district roughly $15,000 on top of the grant to purchase one. And, and they are smaller. This is a 144-inch, I'm sorry if you guys can't hear me, 144-inch mower, so almost about 12 feet. Those mowers, the maximum is right around 7 feet.
Thanks.
If no other questions, we'll have it returned under consent. Thank you, Director Bott. We move on to advanced planning.
Just a quick preview. I know it's been, been asked. I share a few of the things coming up. We do have a Panorama survey results that'll be coming up soon. We also have the LCAP, which will have a first beginning or intro read. Law enforcement contracts were moved to the end of May in order to gather all of the information. Retiree recognition is right around the corner. Security guard, pest control, you'll start to see all of our contracts coming through in preparation for next school year. Field closure discussion will occur right around the corner as well as the budget. So quite a bit coming up in the next couple of meetings, along with graduations right around the corner. Make sure you have those on your agenda as well.
Any additional information or closing comments from the board? Then with that, a reminder, our next meeting, the next regular meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, May 28th, 2024, at 6:00 PM for closed session, and of course, 7:00 PM for public session here at the Central Unified School District Office, room number four. And do I have a motion to adjourn from?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Trustee Coria, second by Trustee Kurfan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those abstaining, motion carries 7-0 at 9:28 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.